And we've got an action-packed meeting tonight. We're going to, I'm gonna move stuff around just a little bit in terms of our agenda. We're gonna start by having a show. So everybody who's sitting in the front might wanna come around and sit in the back so that we can watch the, what will I hope will be the final version of the video. We've been working on it for a long time about the new Snow Library project. Thank you for joining. Even though I know that-
No select board tonight?
No?
No.
Oh, God.
It feels wonderful.
There we go.
Don't turn the lights off on my face. Come.
Should I start? Everybody seated? And check the volume right away. Welcome to Snow Library. My name is Jamie Valliot, and I am a library trustee. This is an exciting time in Orleans. We're working on a once-in-a-generation project to build a new library. This video is designed to show you why we need a new state-of-the-art building.
I'm Tavi, the director of Snow Library, and I've been concerned for a long time about the lack of space in the library. A lack of space for books, being a librarian, is my great concern. I have to withdraw books before I can add any new books onto the shelves. But there are many other space problems as well. For example, we don't have enough meeting rooms. All the time, students and their tutors and other nonprofit organizations are being turned away because they have no place to work.
Hi, I'm Nora, and this is George, and we live right in Orleans, down the road, so we spend a lot of time at Snow Library. Oftentimes, it's awfully hard to find parking here. Currently, there are only 38 spaces, when what we would really need is closer to 62. Our hopes for a better library would be that it would provide all the space and access that we would need, and it would make facilitating events and day-to-day coming and going much easier to have more parking at Snow Library.
My name's Anna, and my husband and I were born and raised on Cape Cod. We're currently raising our two daughters, Grace and Eleanor, in Orleans. We are a homeschooling family, so we spend a lot of more time at the library, and the Orleans Library is a great resource for us to give them the education that they're hoping to get. So while Snow Library is an amazing resource for my family, we're definitely bursting at the seams here. My children love arts and crafts, and all the supplies are kind of scattered about because there's not enough storage in the children's area.
Hi, I'm Tracy. I'm the president of Friends of Snow Library. I've been with Snow Library since 2005, and I want to talk to you about a couple of issues we have here in our library with accessibility and emergency increments. If you were in a wheelchair and you want to find something in the nonfiction stacks upstairs, those stacks are flush against the wall on the outside edges of the library, and you cannot rotate your wheelchair to get out of the shelves easily. You're kind of stuck, and you have to back out with your wheelchair. Downstairs, if you were in a wheelchair, or even if you are a person who has difficulty with stairs, we have an elevator, but if there's a fire in the building, the alarm is going to go off, and the power will be shut off, and you can no longer access the elevator, which means you have to climb up the staircase to get out of the basement of the library. We have people who come almost on a daily basis, and they are in wheelchairs, and they often are downstairs because it's a quieter space to work. I'm very concerned about what would happen if we had a fire in the library.
My name is Joan. I am a Snow Library trustee. I have been part of the Orleans community for over 20 years. One of the biggest problems with Snow Library is the leaking roof. It has leaked 12 times in the past five years, causing real damage to parts of the ceiling, the walls, and the floors.
My name is Mary. I've lived in Orleans for 25 years. Snow Library has a very difficult layout problem. The open floor plan means that noise travels across the entire first floor. Kids can't sing loud because people in the reading room are interrupted. The new Snow Library will change this and have thoughtful spaces and doors that can close.
I'm Kevin Gallagher. I'm a select board member. I've been part of the Orleans community for almost 40 years and am the liaison to the Snow Library trustees and the new building project. We should remember that there had been no renovations done to this existing building since 1992. That's 32 years. The building is not up to code. It has so many concerns and issues. We know the roof leaks. Just the replacement of the roof alone would cost us $1.3 million. And frankly, I worry about our valuable collections that need to be properly cared for. Another issue is we have some safety hazards. We have moisture problems. There are buckets that you can see throughout the crane, meeting room at times, the reading room. These are tripping hazards. We have old carpet that gets replaced, and as soon as we replace it, they buckle in less than a year's time. And finally, our health and safety is so important in any public space. The library, most importantly, we have asbestos in certain floor tiles. Removing them and replacing them costs us incredible amounts of money. Just to replace the floor alone would cost us over $100,000. So these are just a few points why I'm so supportive of a new Snow Library.
Hi, my name's Steve Gass. I've been a resident of Orleans since the summer of 2015. The need to improve and expand the Snow Library building was first documented in 2009, when a consultant was hired to engage the community in identifying current library needs. More recently, in 2019, consultants were again engaged to determine both the current state of the library building and programmatic space needs of the community. These programmatic needs were then updated in 2023. With unanimous support of the select board and the finance committee, and subsequently with approval at town meeting, a consultant was hired to do a formal new library feasibility study. In brief, the feasibility study documented that the current facility does not meet the needs of the community, the current facility is not up to the standards of a 21st century library, the current facility is at the end of its useful life, and that costly age-related repairs will trigger additional costly state compliance code requirements, such as universal accessibility and fire protection. And even if these repairs and code compliance issues were addressed, it would not provide the additional space needed for collections programs and public access. Finally, the report shows that a modern, state-of-the-art facility that would increase the library's programmatic space by 2/3 can be built on the existing lot.
Why not renovate Snow Library? That's the perennial question. Why build a whole new building? Snow Library is facing many age-related repairs, such as replacing the roof, replacing the siding. The cost of doing those projects would exceed $1 billion. The Code of Massachusetts Regulation 521 states that if you equal or exceed 30% of the cost of the value of the building, then you have to bring the entire building up to code. This would involve installing a fire suppression system. To install a fire suppression system, we would have to raise the ceiling of the lower level, we would have to relocate the stairwell, and we would have to change out a pipe that brings the main water supply into the building. This is a multi-million dollar project. We wouldn't even maintain the space we have. We would virtually be losing space. Whereas with a new library, completely new building, we would gain upwards of 10,000 square feet of additional space.
Hi, my name is Kim, and I am the youth services librarian at Snow Library. I am so excited about the new library. What can you do to help? You can visit the building or future website to learn more. You can volunteer by contacting the Snow Library staff. You can serve on one of the committees, or you could help with an area of your expertise. Thank you so much for your interest in the new library project.
That's nice. Did you watch the American Girls? I think I did, yeah. I'm sure I got, I had at least one that I watched.
Sorry, there was no food portion for that video.
No Oscar?
Nor large amount of money to be provided. But thank you all so much for all of your contributions and feedback as we went through this process. There's a couple of tiny changes that have been pointed out that we're gonna fix on it, but I, and I think that the general plan is to roll out the video during the month of March so that it goes out to the public then. And it's something that we see having a pretty good shelf life for a little while, so helps educate people on the basic message of why is it that you're thinking about moving ahead with a library project? Back to the, sorry, go ahead.
Since we're talking about the library, I was at the Friends Board meeting, and I was asked if we would be pushing donations when we were preparing for the town meeting, when we ask for our design and build funding, or now?
The idea is that we're not gonna be soliciting any funding to the library at all until we get an approval at town meeting for the design, and that's-
Right.
Fully in process.
Is there anybody here from the Friends?
I'm not sure if the Friends were planning on talking about that, yeah.
No, but I just wanted to make sure that they knew that I asked.
And I can send that message back-
Yeah.
And talk to them about that. And the thing too is that we just wanna be very, very careful that we're not soliciting or taking donations until things are really in motion, because, you know, that design period kicks us so good.
Yeah, well, they were just curious.
Yeah. No, it's an important question, definitely. Okay, so I wondered if there's anybody with any public comment out there? We're going back up to the top of the agenda.
No hands raised?
No hands raised, okay, great. Sorry, I remembered you, Susan.
I had a question, and maybe I am too late with this question, but when I'm thinking about the town needing a new, a new elementary school, a senior center, a library, why does it have to be individual? Why can't we think about like a campus, like, you know, one or a building and a half? So that, you know, the school doesn't have a library, the town has a library, the school has a gymnasium, the town has another gymnasium. You know, meeting rooms, the school has meeting rooms, the library has meeting rooms, the community center. In this day and age, when things are so individually expensive-
Why not package things-
Why not do something completely new? And just a whole, I mean, because everything has to be electrified for the computer and that future. Why can't it be in one building, a building and a half attached? It seems to me that, you know, that people, you know, even someone like me, I mean, I was a teacher, I loved going to schools, to go into a library where you would see students and you would see older people. And I know that there is a safety issue with the public as far as schools go.
Right.
But that seems to me that you could think about how you could solve that horrible problem. And the same with, with the gyms. It just, having three individual buildings that are four, is four?
Fires, school-
Well, the fire can't, the fire's not part of the campus. Oh, okay. Well, fire, it just seems to me that it would be good for everybody. For old people like me, I would feel younger, with young people. I love library. I was one of those babies, 76 years ago, in my town's library. And I just think we need to look differently. I know people are married to that, you know, the Snow Library where it is in town, they're married to where the elementary school is, but does, in this day and age, with the finances the way they are, can't we think of maybe something different, maybe forward, maybe something that other people would, would copy?
Yep.
I know you probably looked about, looked at that before, I mean, I assume you have, I don't know, but, and, and this is coming from a person who is passionate for libraries.
No, I hear you. I definitely hear you. So I can respond just on a very basic level to what you're saying, but because we're in public comment, and it's not something that's on the agenda, we can't have a long discussion about it?
Okay, no, I, I just, I didn't know-
But I really, I really appreciate what you said, what you're saying, and I really hear you, and I, and what I can say is that when staff and trustees met with the town manager's office recently, we did have a conversation about what would it be like if the library went up the hill and combined with other buildings? You know, how much could we really save by having one contractor build, you know, a complex? So it is something that's happening in some of these conversations. I don't know if anybody else would like to speak to that.
Wasn't there a couple of years ago that you were involved in a committee that was studying putting a community center, the COA, and a library, I think, Michael? Looking at those being combined?
It was those first two, yeah, at the same time. And, you know, the Council on Aging fits very nicely into a community center type thing. It's just a question of how you integrate it to into a school facility and how, you know, what the security is, and it's, that's much more complex.
Has anyone ever thought of visiting other places that do that?
I think research is definitely a big part of, you know, thinking outside the box. I'm sure-
I think we have to financially.
Yes.
We simply have to. It just can't go on the way it is.
Well, thanks, Susan, for your comment.
I'd be very happy if anyone wanted to talk about it or to-
Okay.
Well, I think that's something you should go to the select board with also.
I do think every opportunity you have to talk about this publicly, whether it's this project or another project, it's very important to, you know, speak up.
Well, I think especially now since the library wasn't, we weren't given that money by Massachusetts, so we're sort of like back to square one. Well, why don't we enlarge that square one and start thinking differently?
Yeah, and that's one of the things-
We don't have anything written in stone.
Right, we don't, and it's one of the things that we have already talked about with the town manager of the office as well, is, you know, how can we think outside the box with the new facility when we get there? So maybe there's an aspect of the new facility that could be shared.
But you have, you have individual, you ever get together, the senior citizens and the library and the school get together and sort of like-
Well, I think, you know, we're a relatively small town, so there are a lot of conversations going on.
I'm talking to others.
On exactly what you're saying, you know, I don't know if that's happened yet, but, yeah, but thanks, Susan. I really appreciate it. Okay, anybody else on public comment? Okay, we're switching gears and moving on to the minutes. I needed a motion to approve the minutes from February 5th.
Pam, I think you have to make that motion because Sue and I won't here.
Oh, okay.
Oh, okay. I moved that we accept the minutes from February 5th. 2005, 25.
Okay. Any comments or changes on the minutes? Okay, seeing none? There's Mark. Okay, now that Mark is there, we're gonna have to vote with a show of hands. We'll start with Mark. We're voting on the minutes from, do I have to yell really loud because you're far away or no?
No, I can hear you fine.
And we can hear you.
Mark, what's your vote on the minutes?
I vote to approve.
Okay. Sue?
I approve.
Pam? Cheryl? Jamie? Okay, so 5-0 on the minutes. Thank you. So now I'm gonna talk just a little bit about the capital improvement plan. The capital improvement plan as currently drafted is the five-year plan that lists off numerous projects in town. Snow Library has been on this plan for the new building in a couple of different parts and pieces. As currently proposed right now for, the plan is for '26, '27, and '28. And as currently drafted right now, we are, we initially were '26 and '27 for 4.1 million for design and 41 million for a new library in '27. When we held a series of, held a long conversation about a month ago to make some changes with the pace at which we were moving ahead with the new library project, we went back to the town manager's office and said that we were taking a pause, a short pause, and probably not moving ahead with the design phase until either Fall Town Meeting or Spring Town Meeting, so Fall Town Meeting of this year or Spring Town Meeting of next year. Right now, as it's been revised, the library is now, and this is inside your packages. Is that right, Charlie?
Yep, it's the last page.
Yes.
Well, that makes it easier to find. Now it's shifted so that we're 4.1 million in '27 and then 41.7 in '28. So my, what I'm bringing forward today is that in speaking with the architect Matthew Udenz, who helped us with the drafting, the feasibility study, it appears that I made a math mistake when I was calculating out these numbers, and the 41 million was supposed to be, I thought it was 41 and then four, but the four for design actually is inside the 41. So I talked to Matt a couple of times, and again today, I got a response back from him, and his suggestion is that we suggest that the finance committee and the town manager's office revise down the numbers to 3.7 for design and 3 point, and 37.8 for construction. He said that, that that would fit the bill relative to the total of 41.
Jamie, is that, do you still feel comfortable with that, even though we're moving it out, everything out of here? I know prices will go up again.
Well, prices will go up again, but the math mistake that I made is great enough that I would rather go back to within what the numbers were most recently done and-
Well, and if I could say something, I think Matt Udenz has been working in Massachusetts long enough to be quite aware of inflation.
Right.
So I would, I would trust his numbers.
Yeah.
Because he knew it was gonna be pushed out, too?
He did not know that the project was gonna be pushed out, but his numbers were good until the '27, '28 window.
All right.
And he knew that. And just remember, if you look at that list of what's in the 41, there's a considerable slug of stuff that's just, you know, this cushion, that cushion, this cushion.
Well, it's great if it can be that.
Yeah, but it's, you know, Mark, do you have anything to add relative to this conversation?
I don't. I think you have stated sort of my understanding of where we are on this.
Okay.
Jamie, as your select board liaison, I met this morning with the town manager's office to try to finalize the CIP. And to preserve her call, which is her call to do a design-build procurement, the appropriation would need to be the full amount. So I believe she's planning to put the 41.7 in the FY '27 CIP.
So she's okay doing, going that route of full design-build?
That was her indication today, that she really does feel the design-build would get us the most competitive build and also the faster construction process.
Yeah.
That could change, but that was what I saw on the sheet this morning at 9:30.
Okay. That's a significant change. That's something that I think is a good thing for us, not having to go back and ask twice, being more efficient, potentially saving more money. Any thoughts on that, Mark?
No, no, not at this point. I'm interested to hear where the discussion goes from here.
Okay. Was, was that a surprise to you at all, Kevin?
No.
No?
Again, it really is a procurement choice that she makes.
Yep.
If it were a design, and then, you know, in that traditional sense, then you get the design, review it, then go out to bid again, then you would have the two cycles.
Sure.
But if her choice, and it really is her choice, as how she wants to procure this design-build, you'd need the vote of the full amount.
I, I think one thing in favor of that is in Eastham, we did the design as a separate bid and then did the build, and we went with a different architect, and we couldn't use the plans that had been developed in the design. So we had to go back to scratch and start all over again. So it can, it can lead, I mean, in one way, it's good to separate them because it's smaller bites in the budget at a time, and it takes at least a year to design a library anyway. But on the other hand, you don't wanna double pay for your design of your building because of the bidding process.
Okay.
Well, I think it's also good to only have to go to town meeting once to ask.
Yeah, I think so.
But I'm glad we're still on the capital plan.
It's very important for us to be there, yeah. You know, I mean, historically, you did your feasibility study, you went to design, and you did your construction, those key three steps, multiple projects in town have gone that route, but-
It's forever and ever, right?
It takes forever and ever. Thank you.
Well, isn't that what they're gonna do with the firehouse, too?
No, they would also do the same-
I mean, they're doing the same thing. They're asking for it all.
One vote.
Yeah.
Just may.
Right.
Any more comments from anybody? I'll entertain a motion to approve that number so that, Mark, would you like to make a motion, or would you like somebody here to make one?
So just to make sure I understood this, because it's being combined into one item, it is staying at the 41?
Yes.
41.1, yeah.
Yeah, it's staying at 41.7, and it would be in FY '27.
So FY '27, then it, then it's going before town meeting a year from this spring?
Yeah, this spring, yeah.
Right.
'26.
It would not be for Fall Town Meeting, right?
All right. It sounds, it sounds like that's where the town manager wants it to be.
I mean, it, yeah, I mean, and I think that what, I can't speak for her, but I think what she's thinking is after the fire station, which is a considerable ask, going and asking for the full library, that following fall-
So you're saying fall '26?
No, it would be, it would be spring of '26.
So a year from this now?
Right.
Right. When you say fiscal year '27, the town meeting in '26 begins that fiscal year of that, July 1st.
Are you comfortable with that, Mark?
I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I definitely don't want us to slide behind to anything else.
We're standing up there with our elbows out.
That's right. So I make a motion to, what am I making a motion to approve?
It's a motion to approve the town manager's recommendation that we go for fiscal year '27 for a full 41 million point seven for construction, a design and construction of a new library. You don't have to say everything I just said.
I am making a motion to move forward with that schedule of events.
I second, I seconded that we are making a motion to put 4.1 million on the town meeting for the spring of '26 as the town manager recommended.
41.7.
Didn't I say 41.7? I was looking at my writing for 41.7.
I was looking at my writing for 41.7.
Sorry, it's a really big number.
I have trouble with those things. I cannot conceive of them truly.
All right, any more comments before we vote? Okay, Mark, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Sue?
Aye.
Pam, Cheryl, Jamie, five zero. Thank you very much. Now we're gonna continue to make a small change with moving stuff up. Our guest from the Friends of Snow Library is here tonight. And I think you have a meeting that you might have to go to. Are you?
Oh, I have a million meetings.
Okay. Do you wanna, do you wanna come up front and join us and give us the report?
I don't, I, they said I was supposed to give a report.
Oh, you never got it, okay. Should we just accept it into the record? Did you see the correspondence from Tracy this afternoon?
I did. I actually forwarded it to Darcy.
Oh, okay, so Darcy's just gonna include it?
Yes.
Hey, that's very efficient. All right, well, thank you.
However, we didn't see it.
Yeah, we haven't seen it yet.
I just wanna point that out.
What do we do?
Maybe it could just be emailed to us. We don't vote on anything.
We don't vote on it. How about, how about it's just emailed to us for review?
I'll email it to all of you after.
Yeah, thank you, Tom.
Okay. Thanks so much. Sue, do you wanna do your financial report?
Sure. Looking over the finances, I see that we are right on target. We're two-thirds of the way through the year. And our salaries and expenditures are 64%, 63.9. So we're right there. A little over on the money from the Friends, but again, a lot of that gets spent ahead of time. Everything else, I actually have a question still. I still don't understand all these things. The Crane Gallery account, how does it get funded?
The money that's in there rolls over every year, and the only thing that's added to it is when the artists make a donation to it. So for example, every month, if an artist has an exhibit and they want to make a donation to the gallery, that is then added in there. But that's, so that, that balance.
But nothing is really ever spent out of it?
Nothing significant is ever spent out of it.
So it's self-sustaining?
Supplies, yes, supplies sometimes. And they need the walker system to replace some of the devices. But other than that, nothing extensive.
So all the other revolving funds seem to be fine, on track. Nothing unusual with the spending. And the trust funds are building up. We haven't had many expenditures out of that. So we've had, year-to-date, 4,000 expenditures and over 19,000 deposits. So those are building up again, too. So everything looks good.
Thank you, Sue. Any questions for Sue or on the report? Okay, moving on to Tavi's report.
I have nothing to add for the director's report to what I've written, other than the Snow Library building inspection additional information. Will we get to that?
You can go ahead.
Okay.
Shift onto that, that'd be great.
So when we were inspected a couple of weeks ago, as is always the case, there are some non-compliance issues. So for example, emergency lights that are not working. Our custodian goes through and always checks them to make sure they're working. These unfortunately need to be replaced. So they have already been done. A couple of other things, the electric door panels, they need to have enough clearance around them. We've already done that. The only thing we still are yet trying to do is to move some of the older records that we have that are in cardboard banker boxes in the stairwells, which they shouldn't be. And so we're gonna take a lot of the materials in there and put them into metal filing cabinets. And then, and some of the older invoices and so forth that we don't need to keep anymore, we're gonna discard. And so that should take care of that. And then we will be in full compliance. And when this is done, we have one month to do it. It's coming up. I just contacted the fire department again to let them know that we are now in compliance and they come back and re-inspect.
That's it? We've run out of the agenda items. That's incredible. Anybody else have anything that they wanted to add?
I have several things. For one thing, reading the minutes from last month, I know you guys discussed the children's area and want to do it with computers. Now, from the minutes, I didn't see any full resolution or nothing. I mean, I don't know if anything has to be voted on, but has it been decided for sure that the computers are going away? Have they been taken out yet? What's happening?
Well, they haven't been taken out yet. It's a process. So Kim's gonna let the middle school students know. She's gonna make everybody aware of it, but they will eventually be removed.
And what will we do with the computers?
We will either use them in, for other parts of the library or else they will just go in scrap and then the IT department comes and takes them. They usually can repurpose them.
Okay, okay.
Do you have any comments about the actual project?
No, I'm sure that, if, you know, if it had been decided to do that, for sure.
Well, I think we sort of left it up to the staff to what the phasing was gonna be. Kim made sure that it was gonna be something that was put in place in a gentle way. Because it's a significant change.
Okay.
And just to add to, so there will be Chromebooks. So if any students need to use computers, they will, we will have.
Oh, okay, okay. I also have another question, but I don't know if it is one that applies to Ask You. Since we, nothing will be happening now with the library for probably at least two years. Since we're waiting a year and then you have a design phase. So during that time, are there things still you're thinking of to do to help where we have some issues? I mean, are we going to have a few projects to help make things better?
Well, there's one that's in the pipeline right now of recarpeting certain areas. And whether this went forward or not, we still have to do them because there are safety issues. In the Marion Crane Room, where we have a lot of our programs, all of our programs, the carpet buckles in there and it's a tripping hazard. And in fact, at times, we've had to keep the doors closed. I've bought dehumidifiers to put in there. And also, we've sometimes had to put cones. The bumps in the carpet have been so bad. And the same thing in the reading room. Unfortunately, the two areas that are the most highly trafficked areas where tripping is a great likelihood. So, and, and so while we're, I'm working with Ron Collins on this, and you'll get the timeline update as it goes forward. And then we're also going to do the mezzanine. And the reason we're doing the mezzanine is because the carpet there is frayed in certain areas, so there is a little bit of a tripping hazard. Where wires had to be run in, they were covered over with duct tape. So there's duct tape there. Paint was spilled on the carpet. Bleach was spilled on the carpet. It's very unsightly, and patrons have mentioned that it is very unsightly. So we're doing that as well. And then the stairwell going up as well has a couple of areas that could potentially become a tripping hazard. So, so these are all, they're, they're really not, I wouldn't call them cosmetic. I would call them, you know, safety hazard, yes. So we are gonna be doing that.
Now, when we put new carpet, and some of the carpet was buckling because of leaks?
No, it's, it's moisture. And the problem is both of these areas, the carpet is one piece. And so we're not gonna, we're, we're told we're not gonna have that problem anymore because now they use carpet squares. And if there is a problem with one of them, they just cut it out and they put another one in. So you can't do that now. In fact, the town has come over three and four times and tried to cut, make slits in the carpet and pull it and put some epoxy in there and put it down. Doesn't do any good.
Okay, all right. Okay, so it, so the problem should go away. I mean, it should be better.
It's gonna go away.
Great. Okay. I had another question.
You do?
For Mark.
Sorry, this is your last one. Oh, for Mark.
For Mark, I mean, he's in the middle of the night. Mark was doing a project of why people like the library. Did you finish that? Do you still need help? Um. There's a box there.
Wait, the, the why I, why I love Snow Library project?
There was gonna be a project where people could come in and make comments, and we're gonna have a board. Did we do that?
It's done.
It does. You haven't been in the library. So it's there, huh? Yeah, it is. Oh, good. Great, thank you.
There was a lot of great feedback. As you would imagine, a lot of it is I love the staff. But the last time I saw some, some pictures of it, there were, there were great parts on there and it would, I, I'm glad that we went forward with it. Tavi, I don't know if there were many more since the last time I saw pictures from that.
Yes, it's still up, and people have added some more. Most of them, again, about the staff or about, you know, the collection.
I have to go in one minute. It would be nice to save that and do something really visual with it for National Library Week in April. You know, to, to kind of take it and build on it. Yeah. I think, well, and to make it more, more, more visible, obviously.
You have to go in the library.
Photographic, maybe somehow, so that, you know, I don't know, pictures of the things they're talking about or something to make it more visual. But, you know, it could be a splash for National Library Week, which I think would be fun, to build on it.
I think Mark needs to go to bed.
Oh, no, 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 I'm totally fine.
He does it at town, he does it at town meeting, too. He's definitely concentrating, though.